Can you call this meeting ordered? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hold on, Mrs. Gillis. Mark Terry.
Here.
Stephen DeArmond.
Here.
Dave Campbell.
Here.
Larry Seer.
Here.
Aaron Wilson.
Here.
Bill Wilson.
Here.
Venus Shae. Here. Okay. We'll now take hearing in person for president. And I'm just going to go as they're listed, so Keith Altieri, you are first.
Here.
Come on up and use the microphone. Yes, that microphone is on, guys, so if you could speak up into it.
All right, so I just wanted to come back and give an update. I know we talked about the insurance previously. And one of the points that we mentioned was the safety dividend through the program endorsed to the Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs and Keystone Insurance Group. Just wanted to report that this year was the highest payout they've ever had. The return premium was 22.4 percent. I'm sorry, 22.24 percent. They paid out a total of $739,741 to the policyholders. You guys, that comes to the tune of $28,832.83, so we're returning back to you on your insurance premium for this year. So just wanted to come give that in person and make sure you guys are aware about the program and that it's doing very well. This is the 10th straight year it's paid. The average has been 10.4 percent, but again, this year has been kind of anomaly to the program in itself, so.
It's kind of amazing with everything else going on.
I know, right? Right at sunshine.
Thank you.
Yep, I'll get this and just pass it up. That's all I had. I just wanted to bring that over to you guys in person, make sure. You know, you guys earned this through your safety and not having claims and running a good program. We had you out of this program for a while, but again, we rolled you back about two, three years ago. And just wanted to let you know.
Thank you for the good news.
Sure.
Have a good evening.
Yep, you too. Thanks, guys.
Now, you have to have good news, Larry. Keith brought good news. You have to have good news, too.
Well, let's see. We don't know yet. First off, give everybody an update. After long conversations with Venus and Deb, convention got canceled due to the COVID thing. It was beyond my control. And I'd like to thank council for it, and you've gotten it done the last couple of years. Next, we have the opportunity to get it back in 2024. I'm asking councils consent if we can have it in 2024, again, to try this all over again.
So the work that you guys have done thus far.
Correct.
Would that all start over, or can you carry over the funding?
We're going to carry the funding and everything we already have established. We're just going to carry it over and keep going.
So you're essentially three quarters of the way ahead of the game.
Correct.
Out of the game for 2024.
And if you guys decide to pass it, which I'm hoping, can we take the fees that we already paid for this one, since we didn't get to do it, and just push them into 2024 instead of using the fees again?
You still have another form, man. Yep. I don't have an issue with that, anybody.
Absolutely.
What's the amount of work that they've done?
I mean, it was four long years of law work.
You'd have to do forms again.
Correct. I already have the forms there. I've just got to go them out again, that's all.
Yep.
And if it passes, I'll need a paper from you stating the council approved it before Sunday, because we have a meeting with the central district Sunday.
Do you have a date?
Yeah, we need a form.
Yes. It is the 8th, 9th? I'm pretty sure it's the 8th, 9th, and 10th of August of 2024. It'd be the second weekend, not the third, because the third weekend that year is the Grange Fair. I'm not even going to try to compete with that.
Right.
That would be just a losing battle.
Right. Any other motion if we're going to?
I'll make a motion to carry the fire convention into 2024.
One second. Do we need to amend the motion to include giving Diana the authorization to write a letter of consent on behalf of council should the motion pass?
Yes, I can test it. I was glad to add that, too. Can you add that, Mr. Terry, since you need the motion?
I make a motion to put the fire convention to 2024, given Diane authorization to amend the letter on the central district.
Mr. Wilson?
I second that.
Any other discussion?
If we vote no, is anybody going to make a threat to let our houses burn down?
I can't give you that answer.
I have no idea where that came from. It had nothing to do with us.
And maybe wait a couple of years.
Okay, no discussion? All those in favor of the convention happening in 2024, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Just to let you guys know, everything that we did pay for, central districts did reimburse us back.
Excellent.
So we lost nothing.
That's good. Circumstantis beyond your control.
Thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
See, that was good news, Larry. Thank you. Now, Rick, are you going to break the bubble here and not have good news? I'm just teasing.
I did promise you to bring 10 copies, but then my office equipment didn't cooperate.
It's Monday.
So I scanned it all. I can email it to one of you, and you can share it. Or I have one printed copy that I didn't know about touching stuff. If that was a big deal, pass around. So I can leave one printed copy.
Yep, you can leave it.
This is in regards to, I call it one property, but the tax people call it two. 512 South Grand Street. Property is owned by Ethel Swineford. The deed has her sister on her, but her sister passed. We were hired to sell the property. And again, it has two tax parcels. But through research and some measuring, the property line between the two parcels, both owned by Mrs. Swineford, cuts through the house. So it doesn't really make sense to have two tax parcels. I contacted the assessment office, and they said that Lewis Town Borough is one of the municipalities that allows a lot merger. Other people might call it a lot combination or consolidation, but the word merger came out of assessment just by virtue of a letter from you, which is saving somebody, Mrs. Swineford, the young couple that's buying the house, hopefully, saving them potentially several thousand dollars or even hundreds. And it's creating something that probably went down twice in 62 years. Robert Chupin Sr. and his wife bought it, built the house, and then sold it to the Swineford sisters in the 90s. So you say, why had this come up before? Nobody's had a mortgage on it. That's part of the other problem, the reason for cleaning this up, is some mortgage companies will not mortgage two tax parcels. They say it has to be one. Why, I don't know, but it's just kind of cleaning up some odds and ends and making it better for everybody in the long run. So I provided as much information in there, including a simple drawing, but I'll hold it up. And you probably can't see from that far away, but the pink section is taxed as a vacant lot, 110 by 150. And the yellow section is taxed as a house on a 55-foot lot. But the house itself, pictures further back through there, is 60 feet long. So we know 60 feet doesn't fit within 55. So the idea is to combine those two into one.
So the yellow and the pink, you want to combine?
Correct. I didn't write the tax parcel numbers there, but the cards are in there. It'll show you. 301 and 301A. We want to make it all one. What number it is, I don't know that it matters, but go ahead, Mr. Terry.
That looks like several.
Well, that dates back to the original Lewis Town Housing Development subdivision. It was done in the early 1900s. The part that is not highlighted actually went with the neighboring house. So if you drive by, this is, you see the number 207 on your drawing? This property is just north of the old Krensmann Supply. The only thing between there is the old rail siding that goes back.
Oh, yeah, so 207, is that Krensmann's?
207 is Krensmann's. 147 is the old Clasters. Yep. Make a motion, we okay.
And all you need?
It requires a letter to the assessment office saying we approve that you'd combine those.
Yep.
Since when have we done this by letter? Like, I was not aware of that.
That is the claim from the assessment office. I'm not saying you did.
That'd be the first one I've ever been involved in.
They're the ones that told me that they've received them in the past. Just the past 20 years ago, I don't know.
I don't know. We had our two properties combined nine years ago or so. We went through something similar. I don't know what the borough's role in that was. Kish Bank handled it for us, but.
Well, they provided me a list, and there are certain municipalities that say, nope, you have to go through planning. So that would be the borough, the county, back to borough, to say, yeah, it's okay to put them together, but they want surveyor, engineer, whoever, to put it all on a drawing and a new deed and all that.
Under your ordinance, it has lot line adjustment or lot consolidation. The process of adjusting or eliminating an existing lot line that divides one lot from the other, or which adjusts or eliminates the existing lot line, requires a subdivision and land development plan. And that's, I don't know exactly what they're asking for here, but that's what it sounds like.
Say that again. It requires what?
The submission of a land development plan.
I guess my question would be, why would you need that when it's already developed? It's not like it's a new piece of property that we're putting something on.
Because you have to, under your ordinance?
Well, that's a different.
I don't care if you move any lines. I mean, technically, there's an encroachment there, but they own both, and it was before you had any type of zoning or setbacks, I would assume.
I mean, Rick, what are you asking council to do exactly?
Tell the assessment office in a letter that it's okay for them to combine it into one tax parcel bill.
Basically, they own this whole parcel.
Had, so did Mr. Schuh. Nobody redid anything.
But they own all of that, because it's not for us to write a letter, whether this one is. I mean, how they bill things is up to them.
Right.
Getting rid of the line, you need a subdivision plan. So it depends on what you're trying to.
I don't want you to remove the line. It's what you say they can tax it as one tax parcel. Instead of 301 and 301A, you can tax it all as 301 or 301A.
I think we need to call assessment and probably get a better, what they want to do.
Yeah.
Let them know what our ordinance is, because obviously, if they're telling you that it's okay for, that we allow that.
They have a list of different municipalities, because I wouldn't have been here if they hadn't said.
Right, I understand, but that's what I'm saying. There's something that's wrong there.
Doesn't mean you have to do it. It just means.
I would see why they would do it.
They believe that you have done it in the past and are permitted to.
Well, if we do find out that all that is needed is a letter, I mean, can we continue with a motion just to not hold this up?
I don't see why we can't.
I'll revise the motion to read that we had Mark contact them and ask them if there's anything that we're doing there. And if not, then okay.
I'll talk to assessment.
Okay.
Is that it?
That's it.
That way, I won't.
We're going to do a couple more things, but you're done.
That was it for me.
You're done, yeah.
Thank you.
So we have a motion?
I'll second this one, too.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next, we have opening of bids.
Okay, so these opening of bids are for the South Brown Street and Manor Drive paving projects. First bid is for Midstate Paving.
Which project is this one from?
South Brown and Manor Drive. Would you say this was Midstate?
Yep, Midstate Paving. And their bid is $140,551. The next bid is from Glenn Hall Baker. Their bid is $111,780.41. And the next, last bid is from J. Folk Roden Sons Incorporated. And that bid is $159,343.61. So I recommend, obviously, getting into the lowest bidder contingent upon all the paperwork being acceptable.
Yep.
I'll make a motion in the winning bid to Hall Baker's.
One second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next, we have the consent agenda. Is there anything anyone? Oh, I'm sorry. Sure, come on up. Can you, I know you've told us before, but your name and all.
Jeremy Lewis.
Thank you.
15 St. Road Court.
Thank you.
I've been here several times. Everyone knows why I'm here. We don't seem to be getting a lot of police presence. Again, I know we went over this before, that the police have other things to do, and I'm aware of that. I would ask one question. What is the typical allowance for over the speed limit for two of the, I would guess?
There's no typical allowance. By law, it has to be 10 or more over.
To be able to pull them up?
Yep.
Okay. If that's the case. Because it just seems like on, say, like a 5 mile an hour school zone, if they're five over that, they usually get nailed.
School zone is different. They get no allowance in a school zone.
It just seems like 10's a lot for a one-way with one side of the street parking.
That's by statute. We are never going over there. Pennsylvania statute.
The second thing I'd like to, if that's the case, I would like to request the council consider reducing the speed limit to 15 on that two-block stretch of Reservoir Drive. People don't seem to be able to read 25 mile an hour. Maybe if they read 15, they'll go to 25? Because I've already had. I've had Roberts. Roberts has been really good. He'll swing by every once in a while. Like, today, I called at lunchtime, because I had had several flying up through there. Dispatch said he talked to an officer. The officer drove by a few minutes later and just continued on down Fifth Street. Didn't stop, didn't check into anything. I don't know which officer it was or which car it was.
We had one officer working today, and he did make a traffic stop right up in that area at some point there.
But yeah, I would like the council to consider reducing. It is just a two-block stretch. It's one-way. There's parking on, I know in my section, my block, it's one side, on the right-hand side, the first block. I'm not sure if there's parking on both, but I know that there's driveways on both sides in that first stretch, and it can be very narrow through there. So I would ask that the council consider that, because there doesn't seem to be a whole lot changing in the driving behaviors.
Mark, are we able to do that, just that cut and dry?
I mean, we would have to change ordinance.
I was going to say we have.
I would probably say, send it to, yeah, law and ordinance or streets. I mean, you don't have anywhere where it's 15. 25 is like low.
If you do that, you're going to have a lot more requests, I can tell you that.
Well, I can sympathize with you, because as I was pulling out of my garage today, and I live on Market Street, people were flying down the alley behind, and I thought, yeah, thank goodness my kid's not four anymore. And at that age where he would run.
I've got a year and a half, four and five.
Yes, yes. And you just can't be everywhere on the top lane.
And I actually, just the other night, my wife had picked up some groceries in my driveway with the length of my driveway, a Dodge Journey. I don't know how familiar you guys are with the length of a Dodge Journey. They're not that terribly long, but the back end of that is right on the edge of the street. We're getting groceries out. There was a vehicle parked on the opposite side, so people had to swerve around that vehicle, which put them right on top of me. I actually had a guy within inches of me, and he gave me the finger, and he didn't slow down at all.
Well, unfortunately, we can't regulate people being decent.
Well, that's, yeah, but we can regulate people.
We can do that, but I wish we could do the latter.
But I would also ask the council to consider giving me permission to start hitting their cars with dog food the next time.
Oh, we can't do that.
Because I had a bag, a 35-pound bag of dog food, one hand, groceries in the other, and I was considering slamming it into the.
That's all pretty sensitive.
Yeah. I thought about laying it down and making a drive.
Well, we can set the request to law and ordinance and see what we need to do or do some more investigation.
That also gives the officers a little more leeway on being able to, if potentially needed, to make stops. Because, you know, if you think 5 mile an hour, and then somebody's going 10 mile an hour over there, that's considerable difference at that speed.
Right.
I mean, I get the PA ordinance. I understand that. And I can understand that for highways. But when you're talking borough streets that are narrow as it is, or making them narrower now with some of these handicap sidewalks.
If they ever approved radar, that's only five of them, so.
Yeah, that's.
And that's, yeah, I mean, if you contact the state representatives, we've been pushing for that for years.
Well, I am aware of that. Roberts did explain that to me that last November.
If they have enough people contacting them and pressure, maybe it'll do some good. I don't know. We're trying to get it. Make our lives a lot easier, too, than being able to.
Well, I did want to ask you, Deb, I don't know if that's sort of a form of radar. The ones that have the strip that goes across the road, what is that, a start line? And then when it ends, is that another, and then, is that a form of radar, or is that something?
No, that's not radar.
Now, is that, is that something that you guys would have access to that would make it a little bit easier for your officers? Or is that not? Is that still a PA state?
Yeah, it's still, I mean, we're still talking at 10 mile per hour. They have to be 10 mile per hour over.
Because I didn't know if that would be more accurate than a stopwatch.
No, it's not any more accurate. It may be easier to use, but it's not, I don't think it's any more accurate. Radar, I mean, would be ideal, but.
Right. And then back to the staffing of the department. We have, we have six patrol cars, five patrol cars?
Five. Four.
Four.
Four? Okay. I'm just curious as to why we only have two officers on duty when we have four patrol cars? And if we only have two at a time, why do we have four cars?
We have one that the supervisor primarily uses, and one is sort of an extra one that we use for SRO when school's in. So any given time, we have two officers, and then the supervisor works a shift, overlapping shift. So we at least need those three cars.
There's really, at any given point, almost three officers.
Correct.
As opposed to that two.
Yeah, at some point, it's.
But, okay, I guess that's.
The law and ordinance meeting is the third Thursday?
No, it's the second. I think it's the second. It's the first.
It's the 20th.
It's the 20th. There you go. Whatever Thursday that is.
All right, but yeah, I would strongly ask that the council consider reducing that speed.
Welcome to come to that and see what occurs.
Okay. I more than likely will.
Okay. Thanks, Jeremy. Have a good night.
Yep.
Okay. Consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like pulled out of there? Not, I'll intercede the motion, though.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Diana.
So just a couple of updates. South Brown Street, we've been checking the sewer lines. One problem we found at 428 South Brown Street, there's roots in the lines, and we'll have to dig it up there. Mr. Rehab fixed one main line on West Fourth Street. We still have to camera from Franklin to Pennsylvania Avenue for the sewer. We actually started this year checking for storm drains. They've never done that in the past, which I found out. And we had one repaired done up there on West Fourth Street by Crystal Springs, and that one's already taken care of. We still have to finish cambering for the storm drains on Pennsylvania Avenue to Brighton Avenue. And we have no storm drains on South Brown Street. But on South Brown Street and Fleming Avenue, they have an inlet there that needs to be repaired. And I also wanted to thank Mr. Zuppler for submitting the grant for us, because I know he had been working on that in contact with me, and I appreciate that, anybody to help better the community. So thank you for that. I also wanted to go over the pool briefly. The pool will be open until and including August the 11th, until tomorrow. The lifeguards will be going back to college. And then going forward, we will need to close the pool the 12th, the 13th, and the 14th. Then we're going to reopen it for the weekend, 15th and the 16th, with the hours from 12 to 7, closing again over the week and reopening up on the 21st, 22nd until 7:00. And then August the 23rd, which is the last day that we can get lifeguards to be there. So we were able to at least get them that far in, and then that will be closing at 5:00 on that day. The Splash Hop brought in over $1,000, $1,162, which was great, phenomenal. There were 193 adults and 96 children. So with all our expenses and costs, we had approximately a profit of approximately $462. And we're looking at doing this again next year. The movie night on August the 5th, just ironic, the same amount. That must be our lucky number. $1,162 brought in. There were 216 adults and 41 kids. And we're going to, as I said, continue to work on that revenue and start decreasing that expense over the revenue. So it's going well, and I just wanted to give council an update on everything.
Thank you, Diana. That's excellent news.
The last thing, I wanted to get approval for the United Way of Caring Project. So I was contacted by the United Way, and they asked if we had any projects open. And the one thing that we could, if council would, with their approval, is the community center. It could be, do a real good cleaning. They could do the walls and move the stove and clean that real good if council approves it. And obviously, contingent upon the union, I would reach out to the union president verifying that it's okay for them to do that. But I would also would like council's approval to that also.
I move that we approve that project, and I will say that the United Way is actually looking for more projects. They have an abundance of volunteer teams that are willing to do work and are willing. They're looking for more projects that can possibly be done. So if there's anything else that is available, that's something that we should consider.
I'll second that motion.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thanks, Diana. Anything else?
Stephen, they could actually clean our basement here. The walls and floors and.
They, they had a gigantic list of teams sign up real late, so they are searching for projects to have people do.
Okay, well, I'll reach out to the union also and include that in there.
Do we need a separate motion for the basement, or?
I don't think so.
As long as you approve the United Way as a whole after I've talked to the union, that'll be fine.
Diana.
Yes.
The chief had mentioned Scott Brothers, mentioning maybe they could help somehow with cleaning up meters.
Okay.
These are meters.
We're painting, painting them, or some towns do that.
Yeah, they've done that in the past. Yeah.
Because we're trying to get all that stuff in order, and like, you know, it'd be good to refresh everything.
Okay, yes, I will check up. Obviously, it's all contingent upon the union allowing us to do that. But yes, I will, I sure will.
Okay. We did it. All right, Diana, we're done.
Thanks. Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope, good, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. President. All right, for the month of July, the fire department ran 38 alarms. And now a typical mix of everything. We had several building fires, cooking fires, brush and grass fires, medical assistance, motor vehicle accidents, pedestrian accident. We had an extrication rescue. We had an extrication rescue. We had a worker up here in the alley behind the vanister auto parts working on a bucket truck, cut trees down. And the boom, the bucket truck collapsed. He was pinned with some major serious injuries. Rescue squad had cut him loose. Last I heard, he was come along, but he had some major injuries. Also, there was a water rescue. We removed some victims from the stalled elevator down by our apartments. Several gas leaks with natural gas, couple lockouts, a couple police assists, some public services. We had some basements to pump out here in the past couple weeks. Odor of smoke in the houses. And also, we had four automatic alarms, which didn't amount to anything. The bowling alley up here in Fourth Street two weeks ago was a major fire when it came down to it. The troops done a heck of a job up there. When we first rolled in, we seen smoke and fire coming out of the corner of the roof. And with the construction of the building, it was one of those buildings that had like three layers of roof up there. The fire was in between the top ceiling on the second floor and the roof. Took a lot of cutting to get to the fire. And to make matters worse, it was one of those 95 degree days like today. I called in quite a bit of Muschoe that day. I had about seven outside of our company's command, and we set up shifts relieved the troops. Fame came down, set up the rehab. Every half hour, they'd monitor the guys that's in the fire, take all their vitals, give them some liquids, make sure everybody was all right. They done a good job up there. Also, a couple reps from United was in here a couple weeks ago. They found a ladder truck at their Sirius Bell by and they went to the bank, they got their paperwork okayed, and expect to have that within three to four weeks, then probably take about a month to train everybody who wants.
Excellent news.
Okay, that's it for me.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Chief.
Hey, I have a question about, how long are you guys going to continue the Friday fundraisers that you guys have been doing?
Well, since you mentioned that, I mean, the public's treated us great. The guys are making money off of that.
Good.
And we're getting a lot of support from businesses, from the local people. A lot of the stuff that they are chancing off has been donated to them. And the way things are now, that's pretty much the only thing they can do. And as long as it's working, they'll continue to do it. Okay?
Yeah, I just wondered how it was going. I see them is.
It is, it's terrific.
Excellent, excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
I'm going up there too.
You go right ahead.
Thank you.
His report's a hard act to follow, I tell you. I've mentioned several times about the 225th anniversary of our borough. We're working with the chamber and what we're going to do is schedule it for September 28th, which is like a kickoff to the Goose Day week celebration, so you'll be hearing more. Time wise, it'll be between 6:00 and 8:00. And it's going to be similar to the program that we were going to do back in April, initially before everything went sour on us. I had an individual approach me about them wanting to have a sign made, a banner made, just with vote. It doesn't have any political aspect, you know, between the parties or anything, but they'd like to be able to have permission to have this banner placed someplace in the borough. And I was coming to council to see if that's an okay thing for them to do. They're going to pay for the banner, but they're requesting that our workers would put it up. So I don't know, it's just a reminder to people the importance of voting. And I don't know how everybody feels about it. Any thoughts on it, yes or no, or?
The banner that goes, I mean, across the street or is this?
Yeah, they wanted something to go across Market Street somewhere.
That's going to be tough to do probably. Yeah, that's a Penn Dot Road. I don't know if we can give that approval, Mayor.
Yeah. Well, how about someplace else, you know, if there would be another location that?
I mean, if we would know where, yeah.
Yeah.
What about, I mean, isn't there kind of an unused wall there behind the fountain?
There is, yes, there is, yeah.
We don't know, we'd have to get permission.
Well, we'd have to go through, you know, the owner of the building and all, but I mean, this is something that, I mean, I can take care of it. But you guys feel okay about it if we have to sign up? Like I say, it won't have, you know, the party's names or anything like that on it.
Just says the word vote.
Right, right.
Yeah, I know past practice has been that temporary political signs aren't really regulated by the borough.
They aren't regulated?
No, I mean, that's what I've always been my experience like.
I hear what you said.
He said temporary political signs are not regulated by the borough.
Okay.
So I take that to mean that, yes, they could.
Go ahead and do it.
Right?
Yeah, I mean.
If they didn't get the permission from the, from the owner of the property, then.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that's what I need. That's mine, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Clemmons?
Terry, for July, we had 457 calls for service, 21 traffic citations above non-traffic, and 71 parking. Majority of those were sweeper tickets, 69. Civil service testing we completed this past week. The results were certified by the Civil Service Commission today. We have 10 candidates on the list, and we currently have one officer open to, looking to fill, and we'll talk more about that in executive session. We started what we call a kids' ticket program, but we saw it on Facebook, we sort of pushed it out in the past week or so. Basically coordinating with local businesses to hand out tickets to the kids that we see doing something positive, you know, wearing their helmet, riding a bike, if they're helping somebody or, you know, anytime an officer sees a kid out who's doing something positive in the community, hand out these tickets and they can get a treat. Square Cafe gave us tickets for ice cream cones. We've gotten a few for Dairy Queen and Carousel Skating, Rink just contacted us today. So some other businesses are starting to get involved as well, so. You know, so we're expecting to be something positive, interaction with the kids. And we'd like to thank all the individuals, organizations, churches, businesses. Over the last few weeks or a month or so, we've been getting a lot of things for the officers, food donations, certificates, cards, just general, you know, showing the support from the community, and the officers really appreciate it. So I just wanted to make sure we thank everybody that's been involved in that. That's all I have for now.
Is there any way we can get a better handle on street sweeper tickets?
I don't know what you mean by a better handle.
Well, the one week we, the street sweeper operator counted, we had 5,800 and some dollars worth of tickets. Nobody put any out.
I don't know, we broke 200, so far, so far this month, they broke 287, so.
Some nights, some nights you're doing it, some nights you're not. They're doing some of the streets, not all the streets. There hasn't been any tickets on Chestnut Street or Valley Street there, that first block, that, that's all every night.
Chestnut's extended, that's two times.
Yeah, Chestnut Street extended, they missed the other 33 last night vehicles, didn't have any tickets on it. I mean, people were complaining, they get a ticket, and then, you know, the, the next night, their neighbor, he doesn't get any. You know, it, it's really not fair.
Well, that, but also, people just will not move their vehicles then, and then we don't have clean streets. This is the thing, by media.
Well, I mean, yeah, once you start handing out them $15 tickets, why they begin moving?
I mean, I don't know what to tell you other than, you know, they've gone up significantly in the first 10 days of this month. It was 287 already this month, that's in 10 days, so. I can't answer every specific street. We've gone over this before, I mean, sometimes. I know one of the officers said, you're probably going to get complaints, because I was halfway through the street and I got a call and I had to leave. So half of them got and half of them didn't, so.
I understand that. Do they, do they know that that first block of Chestnut Street and the first block of Valley Street are every night?
I would assume, because they have a schedule of the streets.
Well, I mean, there, there, I haven't seen a ticket going there and, I don't know, I need a card. And every morning, there are vehicles parked by places.
Well, we can remind them of the ones that are every night and.
I mean, I, I understand that there's, there's going to be situations where they're going to be called away on calls and so on. But I mean, we, we need to get a more routine.
Actually, I put our internal night shift just for that, so that we can be more consistent and they have more time to spend with the tickets. He still has to be with an officer, so he can't go out on his own at night and do that. But, you know, so hopefully it'll pick up, like I said, you know, 287 already this month, and we're only 10 days in the month, so. But I'll remind them of the streets that are every night.
Well, like I say, that's, that's, that's 28 a night, and last night, there were served three vehicles kind of without any on, so. And that was just going two streets. So I, I don't know, I mean, it's. I just, I just feel it has to be a little more, you know, fair to people. 5,800 and some dollars in a week, a lot of money to lose.
Why don't you, why don't you consider hiring a parking enforcement officer? They could do shifts, they could do night shifts or, you know, alternate day and night.
The only way you're ever going to get really consistent enforcement of that is to have a person specifically assigned to that. But the officers, like I said, we have two officers, you know, some nights, they may not get to write any. I mean, it depends on what they have going on, but it's never going to be really consistent night after night when you only have two officers and have all the other calls in there, so.
It's just an awful lot of money to lose.
Yeah, but Larry, that's not the purpose of the police department, to generate revenue. I mean, we've gone over this before, but, yeah, we, we do through enforcement, we do generate some revenue, but it's not our mission. It's not our mission is to create revenue for the borough.
No, I, I understand that, but, I mean, how would you feel if, if the street right across from you, or you get a ticket every, every week and the, and the guy that lives in the street across you, his night's another night, and they don't ever do his?
I agree, it's not fair.
Well, you know, it just has to be more routine, however, you know, however they do it.
Exactly what I just said, it, it needs to be more consistent, and we need to have a person specifically assigned to do that every night, and it would be more consistent.
They'd almost pay his wages.
That's up to council.
That's part of the agenda. Okay, Diana, are you doing records or?
So the, the rec board, for the minutes, they just reviewed the pool and the costs associated with the revenue. And they also had agreed to continue utilizing the teleconference. Do you have anything you want to add to that, Mark?
I wasn't there.
Oh, okay, all right. So we, that's kind of really all they did on there. But we did get a community center agreement that was actually received on August the 4th from Brenda Hutchinson. She wants to utilize the community center activity room on August the 22nd, but she wants to do, hand out like wine coolers. So on the actual bartender agreement, she doesn't want to utilize an actual bartender. She just still wants to be able to distribute alcohol by utilizing herself, by just, you know, handing out coolers. And I did speak with Mark Remy in regards to this briefly. Do you have insight you want to?
What I was able to look at is in our own ordinance, you're not allowed to have alcohol except, in rec park, except at the rec center pursuant to the Borough Council rules. If you look at your, like, your application form to use it, it does say right on there, you have to have bartender to do this. That's always been Borough Council's practice.
It has to be, it has to be one and took the course.
Right, like a, yeah, like, there's a licensing thing for liquor control, so I would not recommend allowing.
I think it opens up a can of worms for.
Right, it's a liability that we protect ourselves against by putting that in there, is my understanding.
I agree. I'll have Ms. Ruth, we'll reach out to her and tell her she can still have the event, but she cannot have alcohol.
Unless she hires a bartender.
Right.
Thank you. Mr. Remy?
The, the river camping area, I sent Peter Donald a letter regarding our most recent discussions on that from the last meeting. I haven't heard back from him yet, so. Yeah, so we'll, we have our proposal out there for him, and we'll, you know, kind of wait to see what they.
Long ago. You didn't send the letter, I thought, of course.
That's correct, yeah, that's why I sent it.
And this is, and it was okay the last meeting. Why's it taking so long to do this?
Well, I mean, you know, I probably put in about 80 hours for the borough last month, I mean. And I had a week off, so there's only, you know, so much that I can, I have time to do. I mean, I certainly wanted to get it done during that time period, but, you know, that's when, that's when I got to.
Did anybody get any prices?
We had to get them agreed to at first.
That wasn't what the motion was. The motion was that we were going to get it done irregardless, whether they went along with half of it or not. You know, you, you, this, this council has over $200,000 in lawyer fees paid out or billed so far this year. And, and you're worried about something that could be a liability to the Estambor for approximately, I'm guessing anywhere between $6,000 and $10,000. You know, it, it, I can't imagine that they're going to go along with paying half of it when they, when they say they own it anyways. You know, I thought that's, I thought we had this settled at the last meeting, and that's the way I, I stated the motion was that we were, that it was going to be done irregardless, whether they went with their half or not. And I thought that's the way you seconded it, I think.
I can, I can read it to you, Larry, I have the minutes.
Okay.
Because you're, I think you're right. On a motion by Larry Seer and seconded by Mr. Terry, council by a 6 to 1 vote approves sending a letter back to Mr. Sellers and Mr. Dobizinski informing them that the borough will be acquiring surveyor estimates and will take the lowest bid.
Right. Irregardless, whether they're going to split it whether or not. So, so we ought to, you know, I, I don't understand what's taking so long to get the, get a surveyor, you know, other than the fact they're, they're trying to fool around till the end of this summer, and then, you know, we'll be, have the same thing next year.
I'm just reading over to make sure I didn't miss anything.
But I, I know you, you seconded my motion.
Yeah, I was under the impression we were giving, giving.
Yes.
Yes, the estimate to survey, and if they wanted to split the cost with us, which I think would be the bare thing to do.
Yeah, but we were going to do it irregardless.
Yes, we're definitely going to get prices for a survey to be done on the property.
That's correct.
Because at the end of the day, we need to survey, or we can wonder about it forever, it just needs to be surveyed.
Sure.
And if they want to go halves, which.
Yeah, I mean, and if it does happen to be theirs, then we're going to get money out of it anyway, because, you know, they're going to have to pay to, to have a camping area in the, in the borough.
Right. And if it's not theirs, it cleans up a lot.
So I guess we need to have those estimates, okay? You want me to get them then, Mark?
Oh, yeah.
The matter being, okay.
But this seems a drug ad with so long, it's pathetic, I mean. But this seems the drug ad was so long, it's pathetic, I mean.
My, my initial advice many, many months ago was get a survey.
I, I, Mark, I, I, and, and I, I didn't mean to jump on your ass, you know, like that, by not getting it done, but, I mean, it, it is getting a little monotonous now, it's been prolonged and prolonged and.
Well, I do agree, your first response was that, I was thinking if they bought it, they would have a deed or something that indicated that it was theirs, so I just figured if you just asked them if they owned it, they could provide documentation.
Kind of like the documentation Mr. Schmelz showed you at the beginning.
That's exactly right, and if they owned it, it's taken care of it, but then it comes down, but we still don't know, so.
Yeah, and we don't have a deed to it evidently either, so, you know, the only way you're gonna get it settled is to have a survey.
We both have some kind of like anecdotal evidence that it's ours, our, our evidence is like an old PennDOT drawing, they provided, I think, an old tax map, which is typically not very accurate, but neither one of them is really what you would call real evidence of where the boundary lines of the property are.
Okay, we can get this.
We'll continue to.
We can get this done before next meeting.
The LERT ordinance has been advertised and posted for consideration about whether you want to adopt that tonight. That is the one that allows for some, um, reductions in the amount of real estate taxes on improvements that people make to, to certain properties, and the amount of the reduction spans ten years. It's different whether it's in a, like, a manufacturing, an industrial, or a commercial zone, or other places in the borough, how the, how the, uh, the reduction goes percentage wise. This is another thing that's been, you know, it's been bounced around for a while, I think it was sent to finance and, and back.
Yes, it essentially offers people incentives to fix up properties.
And it goes for residential and commercial, and applies to, and it's all across the borough, there is no, you know, particular area that it applies to. Yes, Jim?
Just want to make a couple of comments on that. Um, the ordinance has been shared with the county, and I believe it's also gonna be shared with the school district. Um, they have to pass similar ordinances, so it is consistent with all taxing bodies, and I know of several property owners that are anticipating this.
Well, with our understanding, everyone was in agreement when we started this process.
Correct, correct. You just have to have the proper paperwork for all, so.
Are these commercial or residential or industrial?
Um, the owners I'm talking with, um, are managers of rental properties, as well as, um, a person that's looking at a commercial interest, so.
Yeah, well.
Positive to see one.
One for ten, commercial.
Um, it is a, um, kind of like a combination office and a service. So, good to see you, come, come forward.
Thanks, Jim.
I just wanted to, we were talking about surveys, and I thought we had done something with them. So on May the eleventh, council meeting, it was May the eleventh, I have the minutes up here, it says that, this was when Lucas Parks was here, he discussed about it, the mapping does provide the general location of the property, but should be verified to prior to establishing that field. Ms. Walter said they reviewed the situation with their survey department, and they felt that five thousand to seven thousand was a fair estimate to conduct this necessary deed and mapping research to properly determine the location of the borough property line in this area. Um, I guess that the campers were currently located on the borough property, so it would be around five to seven thousand.
With that's one.
But that's just one, so we can get more, but.
Why don't you contact him and, and ask him if he has a recommendation to do to get?
Um, right, this is actually here, I guess, do you mind coming up to the, who do you have there?
Yes, I mean, we have the survey department who's capable to do that work, and with the unknowns of it going back so far, uh, the deeds bounding the river are, are pretty, uh, not errant, but, but difficult to make, do the research and, and just uncover everything. And we had referenced the PennDOT map from when the highway went in, which showed, uh, the Dobizinski property down by Green Gables on the turn to the drainage ditch, and then everything else up to the sewage treatment plant was shown as borough property on PennDOT's maps. So that sort of gave us the reference of, and the discussion back in May that Diana brought up, of, let's pursue it this way, uh, and if push comes to shove, we can then send the surveyors to the courthouse to pull all the accurate deeds, and then go out in the field and locate that boundary up and down the river. Uh, because everything we had shown, everything that we had found did show it as being borough property, but, um, in order to establish those starting and stopping boundary lines, it's, it's gonna take about five thousand dollars, and, and depending on what issues they come into with those deeds, it, it might be a little bit more.
Would that price still be, be the same now?
Yes, yep.
I'll make a motion, if he contacts, we, we get him to get one of the surveyors to do it.
Suck it up.
I think we need to have, I think we need to have at least three estimates, I mean, like we do most anything else to deal with, I mean, I, I think that's kind of what was supposed to happen this past month, and didn't for, for whatever reason, but.
Anyone else?
Do we know two other surveyors that we'd like to reach out to and get estimates from?
Well, maybe you got someone there that's already familiar with the, with the paperwork and the deeds. There's a second to the motion.
There is. Any other discussion? No, okay.
The motion is to utilize eats, correct?
Yes.
What?
The motion is.
Yeah, yeah.
I was gonna say yes.
Stephen DiArmit?
Yes.
Dave Campbell?
Yes.
Larry Seer?
Yes.
Aaron Wilson?
Yes.
Bill Wilson?
Yep.
Vina Shade?
No.
Thank you.
And Lucas, if you wanna get started on that for me, and then just, whenever you can update it, so we can have it back for the next meeting. All right, thanks, Lucas.
Yeah, you, yeah, you can do it.
Is it still being advertised?
No, it's, I mean, it's ready for today, you can do it today, if anyone wants to make a motion.
So, LERT was advertised, we're here to potentially adopt it.
Correct.
So I'll make a motion to be adopt the LERT ordinance.
One second.
Any other discussion on that?
Yes.
Stephen DiArmit?
Yes.
Dave Campbell?
Yes.
Larry Seer?
Yes.
Aaron Wilson?
Yes.
Bill Wilson?
Yes.
Vina Shade?
Yes.
That's quite a, long time coming, isn't it?
That's been in the works.
Yes.
We also advertised another ordinance, which was for sanitary sewers, and this would allow in instances where people discharge things into the sewer that are prohibited, and it causes damage to the sewer, that the borough can seek, uh, to have that damage reimbursed if, if the borough has to go in and fix up the, their sanitary sewer, so. The problem had been that there was just a fine, and it was maxed out at three hundred dollars, and it's, you know, the way things go, it doesn't take long to spend three hundred dollars, so this would be more like actual dollar for dollar, whatever damages, you could go after the people for that. And once again, it's advertised and ready for adoption, if anyone wants to.
And I just have a question on that, and just to reiterate, there is literature that clearly indicates to people that join into the sewage what is acceptable and not acceptable.
Yes, yes, there is.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to adopt the sewer ordinance, one second.
Any other discussion on that? The ordinance does include that we will make sure that the correct part is built.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Meaning, meaning that the last, when this happened and brought this about, we knew where it came from, because there was only one place it could have come from.
Right.
But we do have lines in the borough that there's two or three people hooked up, correct?
Right, and I mean, I don't know there how you exactly establish.
Thank you, thank you.
Establish.
Liability.
Yeah, liability there, I mean, that's, might be a more difficult situation.
Because that's my only concern, that if me and my two neighbors, you know, and they're flushing baby wipes down there, whatever, I don't want to charge eight hundred dollars to fix the.
There aren't that many places that share a lateral, you're not supposed to.
Yeah.
They used to build them that way.
Some of the old row has, probably, you know, I have that yet, I know down Honeybaker Avenue, and I do, there are a couple of it, yeah.
Gran Street, I think.
Yeah, there's, yeah, I mean, it, it's gonna be the, it isn't gonna be the norm, you know, it's.
We would only be able to charge the people that we know that we can charge, you know, we can't.
But does the ordinance say that? That would be my only, you know what I mean?
Sure.
Does it specify that if we can, if we can prove that you were liable for that, that you get billed?
The, the way it, it reads is.
That's a draft.
It's the same, yeah.
Is it the same, okay.
Let's see. This says that the Borough of Lewistown can seek equitable or other remedies as available, including payment of damages for any person causing damage to the system, including damage caused by a person, agent, contractor, employee, any person causes harm or damage to the sewer system as a result, result of a violation of this ordinance, or article shall be liable to the borough. So, I mean, you do have to be able to establish that the person.
Okay, okay.
It wouldn't be a court of law that would allow that. I mean, the instance that made this come up, they were, there was no mystery, it wasn't.
Yeah, there was no mystery, and I realize that, but just.
Yeah, yeah, but, yeah, it's not, um, if it's just a case where there's a clog and no one knows why.
Then we can't do it.
Right, just like you wouldn't be able to find them for that either.
Okay, I'm just making sure before we pass. So we have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
Roll call, Mrs. Miller?
Mark Terry?
Yes.
Stephen DiArmit?
Yes.
Dave Campbell?
Yes.
Larry Seer?
Yes.
Aaron Wilson?
Yes.
Bill Wilson?
Yes.
Vina Shade?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, now we are on to new and unfinished business. What do you want? That was my hearing. This was the hearing earlier, correct?
Yeah, this was the hearing for the CDVG CV application. Um, does council want to continue to allocate the funds for the laptop devices? I know there was discussion on utilizing for businesses also, um, but the laptop devices, um, whatever you allocate, uh, the laptop device is sixty-one forty-seven, and planning and administration is ten eight fifty. The total amount for the funding is seventy-two three thirty-seven, so it will be up to what council wants to do.
And there was no further discussion of any other options for avenue or venues at either of the public hearings, correct?
I didn't go to this one, but the last one there wasn't.
Well, were, did you attend the last public meeting?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, that's true, because I know we had talked, maybe it was in a committee then, about the small businesses, I think you had brought that up.
Yeah, that was my thing, I, I wanted, me personally, I would much rather see the money go and be used by our residents and our small businesses, but it seemed like it was difficult to lock in as to a specific way that that could happen, and the avenues that are available currently are very underutilized, it seems, or, or as so, as I was informed in, anyway. I, yeah, I mean, I guess our discussion in finance committee was just the two of us, and, and I didn't necessarily agree with, with the contributing this money to the school district for various reasons.
I have a question then, when you're done.
But, but I seconded the motion, and I voted yes, because I didn't feel like two guys sitting in finance committee should make that decision, it should be all council, so we're, here we are.
Well, my question is, and I apologize for not being able to attend the meeting, but I did finish working time, um, it says that purchase laptops for students residing in Mifflin County or to aid in remote learning if schools are unable to resume in-person classes. What happens if they're able to resume in-person classes, then where does this money go?
Yeah, so the laptops are already bought, and I, I had the same question earlier, we get a vaccine, um, things resume back to normal in the next few months, I mean, it's not like a vaccine's very close at hand, and things start to go back to normal, right? What then, I mean, you have purchased laptops for a few months.
Well, I wasn't even worried about that, because this is if, if they're able, my question is, this is if they're unable to resume in-person classes, look, and I don't have much faith in anything these days when it comes to this stuff, but what, what happens to this sixty-one thousand dollars if they do go back to school and we don't need to purchase laptops, then what? Does this go back to the, the county, and we go back through this again and, and establish where, you know what I mean, does that make sense?
I understand what you're saying, if they no longer need the laptops, where's the money go?
I know that she said it had to be submitted by the end of August, so I don't know that.
No, I understand that, but I just want, I guess maybe it's Chelsea, is that what I mean?
Tassidy.
Tassidy, I'm sorry.
I don't remember her number either.
Maybe that, that question needed to be asked then, and I was, like, again, I wasn't here, so I don't know, but, um, I'm not opposed to giving this money, I mean, I, I realize there's a lot of students in our district that would benefit from this, um, do we know if it also will help with internet services? Because that's the other side of, side of this. What if you don't, what if I have the laptop, but I don't have the internet service to allow three kids in the house during the day?
Mr. DiArmit had an answer for me when I brought that up, I thought, in committee.
I don't know that I do, actually, I, I mean, I think there, from what I understand, there are other funds from other places that are going to expanding internet service, but I don't know that this does anything yet.
Comcast, I know, is offering free two months internet services. I did four, I, I got information on that.
Well, that's okay if you're in a Comcast serving area in there.
Pardon?
That's okay, as long as you're in the Comcast serving area, but if you're not, you, you know, I mean, there's places in Mifflin County where I can't even use my phone as a hotspot, because there's no cell service.
Yeah, you got a good point there.
Well, within one of these meetings, and I thought it was the last finance committee, it seemed to me that the mindset was, maybe this is another way to push the issue of the lack of internet being available.
Well, and there is a committee that's been working on this for years.
And I, that was the discussion, that was part of the discussion.
Maybe that's the wrong word.
Part of, part of the discussion was, if you get the devices and say, hey, we, look what we did, we got all these devices, and now we don't have internet service for these kids, then that drives the, that, that puts the onus on the next step to expand the internet service.
And there is a committee, you know, within Mifflin County that is working with that, I do know that.
Right, there is, yeah.
How many laptops are they buying?
They, they said that it would be, what, a hundred and twenty, two hundred and twenty-five, but with Granville and Darien, it would be a two and seven hundred, but a hundred and twenty to a hundred and twenty-five would be getting inside the borough, that's what she said tonight at the meeting.
And the school district decides who gets these, correct?
It's the teachers.
The, the teachers' union is whose, the district is not allowed to receive the.
Is whose, the district is not allowed to receive the laptops, so the school district, I think this, I believe the school district has agreed to do the technology side of it, to image them and to maintain them, Mr. Terry is very excited to hear that. But the teachers' union, I believe, takes possession of them, and then it becomes like a lending library.
Okay.
So the, the students don't actually, they're borrowing the laptops from the teachers.
Right, I get it, we're not buying them for them, but.
Correct.
That was just a question, but, yes, Jim?
I did participate in some of the Finance Committee meetings, and the county does have a committee that's looking at broadband, municipal support, small business, and also help for nonprofits, so there'll be a lot more information coming forward whenever.
I don't know, that, that committee's been around for how long, Jim?
Maybe.
Quite a few years.
No, 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 this is.
There's been a committee in the, in the county to expand internet for years.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's true.
That, that might, that's certainly the case, but the case, the committee I'm participating on is looking at, how do we distribute some dollars that are available?
I see, there's a difference there.
Exactly.
But it doesn't matter how you distribute money if you don't have product to purchase.
Correct, but broadband is to be addressed as one of the aspects of that.
Well, if you just bought out that, I also, I probably.
Yeah, somebody on them, Zito's.
Zito, yeah.
The county's actually doing something, has something.
We got off on a tangent there, I apologize, but it's, you know.
But you, broadband is important as laptops.
Yes, yes, if I, you know. Okay, so what do we want to do here? Do you want to adopt the resolution?
All the discussion, I'm not sure what all that money's can be spent on.
No, it says here is to purchase laptops for students residing in Mifflin County, or either special education students or LMI students to aid in their learning.
Well, I think it's only specified for COVID, anything with a COVID cause. I, I don't have Tassidy's phone number here, but I thought I had it in there, if you wanted me to look for it, well, continue and then come back to it, or whatever you guys want to do.
That's up to them, not, not me, I mean, I mean, bottom line, I, I know that they're gonna need to be purchased, and we don't have a whole lot of time yet to decide what you're gonna do with this money. I think it's a good cause, and if nobody else stepped up and wanted to utilize those funds, I guess this is the option. And I would hate to see our students in the borough, borough, or in, in the district period, you know, be punished because they don't have the resources that they need, this is not their option, I'm sure, their first choice for education, so. That's up to you guys.
I'll make a motion, like, to use that money for.
To adopt the resolution?
Yes. I'll say.
Any other discussion? We kind of did that backwards, I guess, but.
But we did discuss.
I know, okay. Sometimes.
Mark Terry.
Yes.
Stephen DeArmond.
Yes.
Dave Campbell.
Yes.
Larry Seer.
No.
Aaron Wilson.
Yes.
Bill Wilson.
No.
Dana Shay.
Yes. Next, we have Mr. Campbell.
Okay, so Diana originally had brought this up, brought it to Law and Ordinance. It's a, essentially an emergency snow removal ordinance. You know, we have issues with, and the easiest way to explain it, it's kind of like a snow maintenance ordinance that is based on the amount of snow that has fallen, so if we get a substantial amount of snow, we can now have residents move vehicles from the streets so that we can clear the entire street. Diana, you, you can explain this better than I can.
Kind of like what you said, so any ordinance itself, it states about, that all the state highways and the borough streets in the borough are hereby designated as the snow removal zones. The snow emergency, it, it's at such time as deemed necessary, the borough manager or designee may declare a, a snow and ice emergency, requiring that all vehicles be removed from the streets of the borough, Lewistown until the snowfall has ceased, then the streets have been cleared of accumulated snow. So when the streets, guys, go out, there's a lot of vehicles that aren't moved, and they have to go around them, and, you know, then people are complaining, you know, this wasn't done on, on this side of the street, and things like that. And with this snow emergency, it will help assist with the safety, I, I feel it'll help assist with safety, and also with people utilizing, you know, moving their vehicles more, and, and help with the guys maybe even being more efficient, that they don't have to go back and remove the snow afterwards.
That was a big thing that I took from it, we're not plowing in vehicles anymore, in fact, we're clearing the parking spaces for residents in an effort to clear the entire street in one split motion.
Where are you gonna put all the vehicles?
That was a great discussion.
Well, my question would be, where do people park on the streets we permit?
Well, they, they, the streets aren't getting swept, so they park along the sides, they park anywhere they can off the main, see, that's the problem, this is gonna be all in one split, so there's no spare spots on the streets. I think part of the discussion was that we have to have, we have to have signage in order to enforce it. So, part of the discussion was, let's start by putting signs on the main throughways, the big arteries, to see if we can get people moved off of there, clear them, and if that's, if that's good enough that we can move the cars off of the main arteries, onto the side streets, clear the main arteries, let the cars come back onto now an open road, and then get to work on the side streets, was part of the discussion. Instead of, the, the ordinance is written to say all the streets, just so we don't have to do it again.
For every street.
Right, but the idea was, we can't enforce it without signs, so only put signs on the major, like, the big arteries, whatever Tim would say, these are the most important ones to clear first, clear those, and then bring the cars back, and then start to work on the side streets.
And they were Market, Valley, and Third, to start off there with the heart, and then continue forward with that.
Well, I, I get, why wouldn't you kind of use the same.
Well, Valley Street, there's no, there's no parking.
Well, Market Street neither, you're not allowed to park.
Most of those streets at night anyways.
Yeah, you're not allowed to park on Market Street, you can park there during the day, though.
There's, there's a, a three, is a three-hour or six-hour time limit there on, on those streets where there's no parking whatsoever at night.
The, the only thing I would say into Venus is that during the day, if it would happen to be during the day, they can park there, and if the snow emergency is during the day and happens, then we could utilize this.
I, I'm just, I mean, I, I can just see this being a major problem, but, I mean, there's a lot of areas where people could cram them in their alleys, but there's a lot of places where, when you're taking the whole street, the other side don't have any place to go.
Well, I'll, I'll tend to this argument too, just for discussion's sake, if you're, if you're removing cars for a snow emergency, there apparently is a lot of snow, if the alleys aren't cleaned up, you ain't getting to your back lawn either.
And you can't really declare a snow emergency when the snow is predicted, because how often are they wrong?
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, there's just, I guess there's a lot of discussion, I, I like the premise, because I mean, to have a clean, to have the whole street cleaned up is great.
Well, and we have a ton, one of the, the biggest complaints that I hear all winter long is, A, why doesn't the borough plot my parking spot? And B, why does the borough have to plot my vehicle in? And I think that, I, I, I don't know, I see that as being more of a complaint versus, where do I put my vehicle while somebody tends to my snow for me? But at the same time, I said, you know, in Law and Ordinance Committee, you know, look, I, I have a Jeep, but we have a car also, and yeah, I put my, you know, I put my vehicles in my yard during street cleaning, I'm not gonna be able to do that, you know, when there's snow on the ground with our cars, so I, I.
See, I thought the discussion was going, was more of a snow emergency route, so that when it snowed, Market Street, Valley Street, those streets, you didn't park on those streets, as simple as that.
That was kind of my understanding at the very beginning as well, and then it was.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, we're here to discuss it, I mean, it's.
Coming from a state where we used to get a lot of snow, we had emergency routes.
That's what, yeah.
Snow emergency routes.
Right.
And when it snowed, you didn't park on it.
Right.
And that was just the, the way it was done, and if you did, you, you had your vehicle buried. So you didn't do it, so, but you could go with snow, emergency snow routes, that gets your day and your night.
Right. Let's take it back.
Well, I could see like your Main Street, Valley Street.
I could concur with that too, an emergency route, yes.
Four Street, maybe.
Right.
But you see if Tim can make up a little map or something about what he thinks or the.
I mean, but you, you can't say that for the whole borough and, and.
I don't think so, I, I agree.
It ain't gonna work.
I think whenever we looked at some other ordinance that established, it was very time-consuming to go through, they had like every, was that York, City of York?
Yeah, they're big.
On the Law and Ordinance we need, that we were thinking, that was what was the thought process.
Yeah, we had like State College, and State College Borough has every street, so.
Yeah, that's kind of what we went off of, but yes, we can discuss the action.
Next one, Dave?
The next one was coming for discussion as well, pretty much. It is a, Stephen, do you just want to cut me off here and carry on with this?
That's fine.
Okay. She'll be the one to answer questions.
Wait, Stephen, did you see the rooster loose on Chestnut Street or Logan Street the other day?
I heard, I heard.
Okay.
I don't have, I don't have social media, so. I mean, the next one is a, is for approval to advertise an ordinance to allow the keeping of chickens in the borough. You know, I brought this to the Law and Ordinance's Committee, we, with everything that we've just gone through and that we're going through, there've been a lot of people that I've spoken with that have had, as we went through the, the lockdown and that, they've had issues getting meat, grocery stores have had problems, it's just overall been a, been an issue for some people. And I personally think we need to, we need to promote some self-reliance and give people the opportunity to take care of themselves a little bit, so we had, and now, yeah, so we had Mr. Remmy put together an ordinance to allow for the keeping of chickens in the borough. It does eliminate roosters, there's, there's a provision for no roosters to be kept in the borough, so even that one wandering around wherever still would be in there. It sets, sets restrictions for coop size, they have to follow all the setbacks, the normal, the normal setbacks for outbuildings, the number of chickens you can have is limited by the, the size of a coop that you would have, and certainly all of the, all of the noise ordinances and the ordinances for odors, all of those things are addressed in there as well.
You can't keep apartments clean now. You start putting chickens involved in it, it's gonna stink all over the town.
Well, I think, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I mean, those things are specifically put into the ordinance so that they can be enforced.
There's ordinance now on, on keeping your property maintained and you weren't keeping up with it.
But is that a, that, I mean, to me, that's an enforcement issue, not a.
Well, it's just add, add to the problem, that's all you're doing.
And there's also a permit.
That's required, yeah.
Yeah, there, there's a permit required for this as well. I was looking for the name of the permit, but.
That's changed.
Yeah.
Put the bottom of the first.
Let me ask, would, would this include someone going out in the morning first? I mean, if you're getting the permit.
Right, there's an application.
Okay.
You have to, you would have to submit plans to Rex, Rex goes and verifies, and then he certifies whatever, whatever you build, that it follows the codes, and then sets the, the limit on the number of chickens that could be kept. I mean, this isn't something that's.
It's not new.
It's not something that's new or off the wall, this, we adopted our, we crafted our ordinance based on ordinances that already exist in State College and Belphon Boroughs, so it's not something that is just being made up out of thin air, it's something that there's a, there's a movement nationwide for this kind of thing to, to promote self, self-reliance and.
Yeah, and it was, it was definitely kicked back and forth, you know, for, for quite a while, honestly, kind of between us before it even really came out to Law and Ordinance, and then we kicked it around a lot more. It is about the self-sustainability, the self-reliance, I mean, kind of personal, however you want to label it, but it's also about private property rights, you know, being able to sustain yourself and your family off your own property, and I think that's something that many have.
Who's gonna check them?
Check what?
How many chickens you got.
Well.
Thode's office.
Yeah.
Huh?
Thode's office.
They're gonna go around every week and check how many chickens you got.
I don't know, not every week, but you're gonna have to have a, it says something there about they come back, or it's reviewed or something.
Every three years.
Yeah, it's like a three-year permit, and if you had three violations, then you're not allowed to.
Oh, I think your neighbors are gonna let them know.
Well, I don't think, I mean, the, the deal, you know, if you, you're saying how much room they're gonna need for six chickens, or four chickens, or how many they're allowed to have based on the size of their coop. But, I mean, and, and once you get the chickens there and the people know there's an ordinance, you're allowed to have them, that, that guy that only was told that he's only allowed four might have eight. And, I mean, the people aren't gonna complain, because they, they don't know, I mean, they don't keep chickens, so they aren't worried about how many you lie, they just know he's allowed to have them, and.
Well, I, I did notice that it has to be thirty feet from any main building on an adjacent lot. So my question was, how many people in the borough can actually do this?
That was one of my main concerns too, and, and like David, and like Dave said, I think I believe the.
I mean, I don't think it's gonna be a big problem, is what I'm saying, kind of.
No, and it's a way that we don't have, you know, listen, there's, there's people that do with cats, there's people that do with every animals, and they, they try to do whatever they can, some, some individuals. It's a way to kind of control madness of, of a single guy that, that has a yard, you know, the, the size of this room, and wants to try to put fifty chickens in it, you know, it's a, the spacing requirement, that is.
But I just don't know how many properties there are within the borough that are thirty feet from an adjacent property, you know what I mean? I'm not, I can't do this.
There are two things that we discussed, number one, we let it, we talked about, I think Mr. Wilson said, there are a lot of people that can't do thirty feet, and we talked about, do we make it less, do we not make it less, how do we change it? And part of the discussion was, if we leave it at thirty feet and we pass it, and there's an uproar that more people want to have chickens, which I don't really anticipate being a thing, then we talk about changing it. But by keeping it at thirty feet, we, we place some restriction on slamming it right up against your neighbor's back door.
Yeah, I mean, there's people in the borough that, you know, unfortunately, they can't have a shed in their yard because of, you know, similar, or may, maybe a swimming pool, or, you know, so that, I understand that, and it, and it kind of flows through with a lot of different things, not just.
And I, I think there, there are other concerns, I mean, I think the concern that someone's gonna do it wrong and the property's going to be noisy, or it's gonna smell, is a legitimate concern. But there are people in the borough that have too many cats and it smells, and there are people that have too many dogs and it's too loud. So at what point do we say, just because someone's gonna do, could possibly do something wrong, no one else is allowed to do it, because if we're gonna take that tact, then we need to get rid of dogs, we need to get rid of cats, we might need to pave over all the grass, because how should I be allowed to have a front yard because the guy beside me never mows his, and that, and it violates the ordinance? Because the guy beside me never mows his and that, and it violates the ordinance. So at some point, people that do things right should have the opportunity to do them and do them right. And people that don't do them right should have to face the consequences of not doing it right. And if we need to address the enforcement of these things, then that's the next issue. Not barring people from doing things or having the opportunity to do them.
And like Dave said, uh, during the last law and ordinance committee, I believe everybody should have the right to do whatever they want with the property. Now, what if they have a three story house that they're renting? We'll use Mrs. Pepper as an example. Do you have a full house that you rent out?
What do you mean by a full house?
Like, it's not a.
Single dwelling.
Single dwelling, sorry.
Not in, not in the borough?
Well, say that she has one in the borough, I'm pretty sure that she's not gonna want chickens. Plus, you gotta think about pet deposits as well. Some landlords require pet deposits from anywhere from $200 to $400. Or there's some, there's some owners that don't want any animals at all.
But this is permitted only at owner occupied family dwellings, not rental properties.
What if they ask the landlord and the landlord says it's okay for them to do it?
It's not how the ordinance is written. You can't. You have to own the property.
You said, "I don't mind these."
You don't gotta add the chicken.
You don't have to add it.
Yeah, I mean, if there's, like I said, part of the, uh, our discussion was to bring it, talk about it. You know, if there's things in here that. Yeah. Would you change if we want to move forward with it as is? If you don't want to move forward with it at all, I mean, it, you know, here, here we are. Nobody has a suggestion of anything within it, you know.
I wouldn't even, I wouldn't go. I've never raised chickens, so.
Yeah, me either.
So I don't know. I think this is a learning process.
What's the fencing?
Huh?
I mean, do you fence in your yard?
No, there, the ordinance says they have to be enclosed. It has to be a roofed shelter and they are enclosed.
Oh, oh, oh.
And protected from predators.
Oh, I see.
Now, there, we're not talking about free range chickens in your backyard.
Right, right.
Just with a fenced in yard. They're enclosed, panted and enclosed run.
I see.
Yeah, yeah. You do not need.
I didn't, I didn't have that.
Oh. Yes, you did. We've already told everybody.
I didn't see it.
Mr. Remmy said it.
I think it's also one that protects the easy documents too.
Here, Mark, you can have mine, I've read it. You should have sent some right to me earlier.
You know, I told Diana, I think State College is, it's saying there's to include ducks, so you can get a hen game and include ducks as well if you want.
I was very surprised to see allowed at State College, or, or really was. And that kind of made me think of it, you know, a little differently, honestly. I can tell you, when Mr. Darn first laid this on me, I was like, you're crazy.
Yeah.
But.
We all kind of like.
You know, the, the more that we kicked it around and hashed it out, I, I thought it, you know, I thought differently of it.
We can have a chicken wrangler.
If nothing else, I'm gonna make a motion to advertise the chicken ordinances.
Can we rename this like for the ornament, chicken ordinance? God love your persistence, Steven.
Yeah, well, I'll second the motion.
We've already had our discussion. But if there's any more than anybody wants to add, I'll certainly entertain it.
Yeah, I mean, nobody was really suggesting changes or.
Like I said, I wouldn't know where to begin, so.
Yeah. Steven, I mean, he did his research coming in.
He did.
That's for sure.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Absolutely. The State College one is from '08, so, I mean, it's.
They've been doing it for 12 years.
Mark, does it say if there were any revisions or changes to that ordinance within that time?
Uh, I didn't see any, not the way I saw it.
I was curious if they tried something and then replied to it.
I'm not sure.
Okay, so we have a motion, a first and a second. To advertise, this is just to advertise.
Yeah, and you know, that's what advertising is about. It, it's about engaging the public.
Correct.
Receiving feedback and it's.
Let's vote. All those in favor of advertising the chicken ordinance? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Did you vote?
I did.
Okay. You can be advertised.
Well, that was interesting.
Yep, wait till next one. Okay, next. Yeah, Mr. Terry, you are next.
I think they made the finance, so I think they ran about, ran the finance.
Yep, Dave. Yeah.
Yes, finance. Okay, so the Blight remediation grant resolution and staff execution of a letter to the county officially requesting $15,000 funds from the Act 152 along with the intermunicipal agreement with the stipulation that if we chose to build on the property, they would not require us to repay the money. Now, part of this, when we initially went into this, it's my understanding that we talked about so many different grants and so many different blight issues within this timeframe, it was kind of hard to keep them all itemized. And this was initially approved, Diana, this is where we had initially approved $30,000.
Correct, from the general or capital reserve, yes.
Right, so now we're coming back to get approval.
For 15.
And cutting that amount in half to $15,000 because the county stepped up and brought in the other $15,000.
Yes.
Now, the stipulation here, see, just like we did on Valley Street with the property that, uh, as usually he's here, um, that we demoed and, and knocked down and sold, we split it with the county. When we sold it, we had to then repay back, you know, it was 50% of the gross. I think the stipulation that Diane speaks of here is if we utilize this property for something within the borough that we do not have to then pay back.
Correct.
Our proceed or, you know, the, the, the other match, so to speak. Um, if we move forward like we did before and sell the property, you know, on the market, then it would be just like it would have been or did have it on Valley Street. So.
Any particular property?
So you're saying you even have to build around.
That's what he's talking about, right? Okay.
No, no, no.
So this is just a dis.
They don't sell it.
Sell it.
Yeah. They sell it. But this is part of the new group for the Valley Street project.
Yeah, if we.
Okay.
We did receive a letter from the commissioners. Um, I had sent them an email about finance committee had recommended it. I obviously told them that council would have to approve it, but, um, they did say that they agreed to do the $15,000 contingent upon us acquiring the property. Um, the borough's commitment of $15,000 as the remaining local share requirement. Uh, the P A, D C D, that we get the actual grant for $300,000 and then acceptable and executed intermunicipal agreement between the borough and the county setting forth the terms and conditions of the county's $15,000 commitment. We just got that at the beginning of August.
And we've done that before.
Mm-hmm, yes, yes.
Worked out.
Intermunicipal agreement.
Right.
So we are essentially looking for the approval of this execution of a letter from staff, the exact same thing that we did before, only now it is half of what it was a month ago.
That's the $10,000 contribution of the 10%.
Okay. Mr. Zuber?
Just wanted to add that a, a copy of the draft was submitted with the, uh, grant application, but we need the, the resolution to accompany that.
Right.
In order to actually secure the dollars.
Okay.
Okay, so I guess I'll make a motion that we approve the Blight remediation grant resolution and staff to execute a letter in that regard.
And how's that coming?
Any other discussion? Larry coming back?
I think he was in the restroom, I think.
Well, maybe you would have mentioned to the president, but.
I don't know if I want to vote without him.
Do you want to do the intermunicipal agreement too contingent upon that, Dave, or no? Cause you did the first two, but about the agreement. Is that okay?
With the stipulation? Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So was that motion seconded?
Yeah.
Yes.
But I still second with the other.
Thank you.
But do we need to, do we retract it and fix it?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So you have to retract your second first.
All right, so we retract it?
And I'll, I'll retract the original motion and make another, a new motion that we approve the Blight remediation grant resolution, that we approve staff to execute a letter in that regard along with the intermunicipal agreement with the stipulation that if we choose to build on the property, the county would not require us to repay the $15,000.
Another second.
Any other discussion?
I agree. I know you're waiting.
Okay, thank you.
We don't have to decide.
No, we don't. All right, we have a motion on the table in a second. We're ready to vote. We waited for you.
No.
Okay, I knew that's what your answer was gonna be. It's, it's for the, the Blight resolution. Okay, so.
So under number one there, Larry, if you need to see what it's about on the consent agenda.
What you were talking about, yeah.
Yes.
So all those in favor of accepting the Blight grant resolution, staff execution of a letter and along with the intermunicipal agreement with the stipulation that if we choose to build on a property, they would not require us to pay the $15,000, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thanks.
All who voted aye.
And we also discussed the 2020 CBDG funding allocation. I guess there was some conversation among the Streets Committee and then carried over the Finance Committee. And my thought was that we continue to use it, it's my personal thoughts, that we continue to use it for what we can in paving. You know, somebody had mentioned, well, when, when we have all our streets paved. Well, listen, we have all our streets paved by 2023, that's a good darn problem to have.
Yep.
And I think that there's an awful lot of stipulations to using CBDG money for demolition projects, which we have run into that has backfired on the borough in the past. And in my opinion, I, I just, I think that we continue to allocate them for paving.
We talked about doing it for the 200 to 500 block of West Fifth Street because the letters had actually gone out last year, um, last year to, for them to fix their sidewalks.
Right.
And that's why we were gonna look at that particular area to do on West Fifth Street.
And we got them down on South Endtown too.
South Brown Street's bad, I'm a South Brown.
The South Brown Street's getting paved.
Yeah.
That was today's bid. South Lane Street's getting paved.
Um, I don't have it all in here, but I know we have West Wilson, Susquehanna, down in that area. I don't know, I'd have to actually pull. Yeah, I'd have to pull though. But I, I know that the reasoning behind it was because the prior manager had the codes officer send out letters that, that people had to do their sidewalk on West Fifth Street. And that's why we continued with that, so, um, and the other ones were gonna be done this year. But I don't, I, I don't have the actual schedule in front of me to tell you exactly where we're at, but.
But I do agree, agree with Dave, roads getting paved in the borough is a big deal. It's a sure thing.
And, and I mean, in the past, I, I'd say even four years, I think that we have paved a lot of roads and, you know, it's, it shows, you know, we still hear from citizens about how bad the roads are, but, you know, I think that more has been done regarding our roadways in the past few years than.
Well, I think the ones at least that we've been responsible for and not, that aren't pen dot roads.
Well, yeah, 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 I mean, we have no control.
Yeah, we don't have control over those, so.
And even in, you know, even in that regard, we have the Fourth Street project going on right now. We have a Valley Street project coming up soon, you know, within the next two years now.
Yeah, hopefully.
And I think you hit the nail on the head there, Dave, with the stipulations for the utilizing the CBVG funding for demo is, it's really a lot. So it's much easier because we do have the need for the streets, so.
Right.
And there's even stipulations, you know, regarding LMI neighborhoods with CBG funding for certain streets that we paid. But, you know, we still have a lot we can do.
We have alleys, we, you know.
Yeah, alleys are really getting better.
We're working on that.
Yep.
We worked on some last year and then the whole COVID thing needed to stop and we're starting to work on them again. So we're getting there, slow and steady.
I did agree, it's looking better than it has in the long term.
What is, uh, Fourth Street? What are they, what, that's good, that match too?
For the paving?
Yeah.
I know they're gonna be, I think they're gonna charge you this year, I could be wrong, but I, I know they're gonna, they're working on it truly diligently. Get, yeah.
That's gonna be a message winner.
I guess we'll see how the weather pans out for them. Okay. Number three?
I thought that we kind of did this at the last council.
Well, I have some information on that. So, um, Jim Zuber let, left me know that the county rejected the bid for the $1,000. Um, Jim, do you want to give some insight to that? I've just found that out. We had gotten a letter on, that was July the 13th, and it said about us approving it.
Right.
But then, uh, Jim said they actually, uh, denied the, the.
I saw it in the paper the other night where they accepted it.
Yeah. At the last commissioner.
That's a different property.
Right?
They rejected the $1,000 bid two weeks ago, which was the third meeting in July. And at their first meeting in August, it was $100 for a different property.
Correct. The, uh, I, I don't want to speak with, for the commissioners, but what they were talking about is it's not a matter of the money, it's a matter of what the plan is for the property. So if someone is going to bid on repository properties, they want to talk with those people about what their plan is going forward. That was the reason they rejected it.
So did they accept any bid?
On those particular properties, no.
Has that been done with every property in the past?
I don't believe it has been. I think this is a new, um, stipulation going forward.
So they didn't approve the Habitat for Humanities bid of $100?
They did not.
Okay, so we don't need to do anything with this?
I don't believe we do.
I like that, thanks.
Well, I just, I, I have a real hard time swallowing the fact that we're rejecting bids um, was from somebody who is a business owner in our community that, I mean, if, if, is it a fact that they just need to put a plan of action on paper?
That's, that's what the commissioners want to.
And is, and is that individual aware of that?
I, I don't know that.
Cause. Because I just, I would have, I have a real issue with rejecting bids.
Especially we had at the last meeting that that individual probably was not aware of that when the bid was put in. So I would hope with the rejection from the commissioners, that the commissioners would have told that person, this is what you need to come back to the table with.
Right, right.
I believe that was to be the follow through. I don't know if it's actually occurred yet.
Okay.
Because I was just on the 30th of July, I happened to be at the meeting, and we were talking about the blight remediation.
Still me, huh?
Still you, Dave.
So we're looking for the approval of a resolution to allow our borough manager, secretary, treasurer, and our street superintendent to issue citations regarding code violations, which is the norm in a lot of municipalities. Essentially, they would be able to issue any citation that Rex can currently issue. So we would have three people within the borough with the ability to do so, which I think is a good thing considering our efforts in trying to crack down on blighted property, codes issues, codes violations, and just kind of overall appearance of things, you know, within the borough.
Because Rex is off.
That's the...
You don't have anybody with the ability to do that.
Yeah, and with the many complaints you get with codes, I think having more people with the ability to do that,
I wanted to add into that in the month of July, we wrote 98 violations out. And that doesn't include the second letter.
Some of those were courtesy notices.
Well, violations, you know, courtesy notice letters saying that there is going to be a violation. You have a violation here, and then, so, and then before, I think, was it in June, we had 89, I believe. So we're trying, trying to get people to clean their properties up.
Well, and I did look over that, and if anybody else did too, you saw that a lot of them were resolved. I mean, people took care of their stuff before it went to the next level, so, I mean...
Oh, code enforcement works.
Right, right, so...
If you have people enforcing it.
Well, I just wanted to show that we are trying. I mean, like, you know, what the...
The efforts are being made. But I agree that, you know, and I imagine that this kind of came up because when Rex was laid off, Tim was doing this, and Tim didn't have the authority to write those. He could do the codes for us, but he couldn't write the citations.
So would this be from start to finish? If either one of these positions would have the code violation, would they continue to do everything that needs to be done, or is it passed over to Rex to finish?
Well, I would think it would be passed to Rex if he's back in the office.
We share the response, you know, it's not...
You know what I mean?
Right.
So even if Rex is in the office, though, would, would either of you be able to go out and ask, though?
Sure, if he's in an emergency meeting, or if he's citing somebody else, you know, we had a property that needed to be condemned on a Saturday night. I got a call, it was like 10 o'clock at night or something, and so they were trying to get ahold of the street superintendent, and they couldn't come. So I got ready, and I came in, and I got all the paperwork ready, and then the street superintendent did, was able to come after I hunted them down. And then, so we got it taken care of. We condemned it, but again, it was a joint effort where I had, came in and I was able to do the condemned because I knew what to do, get everything straightened out.
But Rex wasn't available.
Rex is not available at that time.
He was on vacation.
Well, there's lots of reasons for this to happen, and very few reasons not to.
Agreed.
I'll make the motion that the borough manager, secretary treasurer, and street supervisor can issue citations regarding code violations.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No. And especially when hiring a parking enforcement person.
Are we talking full time?
Well, I don't, what can we talk at all until we, you know, we got our parking study back. Well, I think we've had it back for a while, but because of COVID, obviously, things are kind of, you know, are where they are. But possibly occurs to me that maybe we should, and maybe I'm thinking of it backwards. Maybe we move forward and we flow into it as the changes happen. But it occurs to me that maybe we should focus on some of those changes so that we can have some consistency within this position. But then again, maybe not, maybe we...
Well, no, I agree, Dave. And if you've read the parking study, you know, the number one thing was meters need to be consistent. And they're not. I mean, when I say consistent, we, our ordinance states that on Market Street, the meters are this long, and on Valley Street, they're this long, but they're not. We've been robbing Peter to pay Paul the last year, so you put the meter that's calibrated for 12 hours on Market Street where it's only supposed to be two. And it's inconsistent, so we need to have consistency. We need to fix what's broke there before you can enforce, you know.
And then, you know, the other thing, I think in previous years, you know, with, it wasn't within the past year, it was that way when we came on to council. I think that Mr. Brothers had been requested to do whatever he could to salvage a meter.
It's been that way for a while.
Right. But, you know, that gets us into the discussion of... Another thing commonly mentioned in this report are smart meters, or meters that are convenient to the way people pay in their day-to-day lives in 2020, meaning, you know, via card, or via an app, or something like that. And I think it's a pertinent discussion to have moving forward, that we do have consistency with our meters, but maybe we, we need to start upgrading them to be more, I don't want to say people-friendly, but more
User-friendly.
User-friendly, yeah, I mean...
We should probably look at a cost or something like that. It does seem to make sense.
It's very, it is expensive.
I had, Scott Brothers had gone out, and I talked to you a little bit about it, of finance after, you know, afterwards, and he had gone out and gave me a list for the Market Street and the other areas to get them back up to where they need to be with, and how many meters we needed. And then I did get a cost associated with that. But again, like David said about, if we would get smart meters here, if that's what you want to do, then we could maybe take some of the other ones and put them in there and not have to purchase too. So that is something we would...
Well, I'd like to see the cost difference between the traditional meters that we're using now, what it would cost to replace, say, Market Street, and reutilize Market Street ones for the other ones. I mean, I don't have any idea what that would cost.
I think that would be a very kind of wise, I don't know, way to approach it in the beginning is, like Diana said, we focus on smart meters in our main business district. That frees up meters that we can fix our consistency issues in other areas. And then, you know, we work our way out as, as time allows.
Just to throw the other side of it out there, I mean, I'm not necessarily convinced that at this time, this is the, this is the right time for us to be hammering out parking enforcement, when our businesses downtown are suffering so much that, you know...
But our businesses want parking enforcement.
I know they do, but they want customers right now, and that's not, they don't have that. And I know what you're saying, because yes, but I just don't know if this is the right time with the current situation that we're living in.
And I totally disagree with that. I mean, that's, that's not lost on me.
I think another thing that ought to be considered too is raising the fine.
Well, I think that that was part of the consistency, Larry, in the study, that, you know, it needs to be more consistent. And giving people that opportunity, you know, it's not a week later that you send it to the magistrate. You send that letter out a week later. And you say, look, if you don't pay it in the next 10 days, you're going to, it's going to be $15, or I think that's what it was, something like that. You know, and then if you don't pay that one, it goes to the magistrate, so...
I think we need to raise the five dollar fee, too. You don't go anywhere else anymore for...
I think that just forces people to not come downtown at all then.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I essentially see that as just a tactic.
I think if they can put the nickel in the meter, or dime, or quarter, or whatever you're going to charge, I mean, it's a way of a street sweeper night. Once you start hammering out them $15 tickets, they don't do it. A $5 don't mean a lot to anybody.
But Larry, those people, those people live here generally, though, you know, like, they, they know, like, I don't know how to explain it. The people that come into downtown, I mean, they may not be aware of that price of ticket, so maybe it just does more to frustrate them rather than push them into enforcement, do you know what I mean?
Well, a lot of, a lot of people, a lot of people don't bother putting a nickel in the meter because a $5 bill to a lot of people doesn't mean shit. You know?
Yeah, I understand that.
And so they just as soon take a chance on using a dime, a nickel or a dime.
Now, I agree when it was $2, Larry. I could agree with that. $2 is $2, right? But $5 is $5. $5 can get me a Happy Meal.
Well, I'm saying a lot of people.
I know, and I get what you're saying.
I mean, a $5 bill doesn't mean, I mean, it used to be you could get a kid to shovel your sidewalk or slide box.
I know.
If it ain't a $20 bill now, they don't want to lift the shovel.
I don't even get kids, my own kids shovels. No, I agree, but I just don't know, I don't know if parking enforcement is the priority that we need to continue the revitalization.
Well, I think, I think we do need parking enforcement, but I think this is the wrong time to be considering hiring anybody because till you get someone, we're going to be approaching winter, I mean, December and January. You know, we usually alleviate everything anyway, so I mean, I, I think this would be a good project to work on throughout the course of winter.
Well, and now might be the time to get those meters consistent.
And maybe come up with a plan that we want to start out next summer.
Yeah, I think that that's, I don't, back to my conversation about the meters. We go that route, we don't go that route with smart meters. I'd really like to see that happen because I just think it's a way of doing business in today's world. And honestly, I think it would get people to pay their meters more, quite honestly, because we're making it more convenient for them.
If you go to smart meters, do you have the opportunity to put coins in the meter then? I can't imagine.
I think the ones in state college, they...
You can't stay home.
I wasn't sure. That's why I'm asking, because not every...
It gives you time to research and get some prices to a one.
I think we're just...
Yeah, I think, I think pricing, getting pricing and things like that, probably will.
Right, but in the meantime, maybe we look at, is there anything we can do now to move any meters around to increase consistency? I guess that's probably Scott Brothers' question.
We've actually done, he's done everything on the market, and I have it in there, on those particular streets, main arteries, he's done everything he can to move everything around. So now the next step would be to either install meters or to purchase, you know, have to help or whatever one could do.
So, yeah, I guess that's where we're at. We figure out what a smart meter costs, what that looks like. Can we refurbish our current mechanical analog meters into smart meters? Things like that, I guess is my thought.
All those things we don't know the answers to.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Maybe we, now's the time to start digging into those things. Throughout the winter, like...
Can we just buzz it up finance?
We could borrow too many. Okay, any other discussion on parking enforcement officer, person, sorry. Okay, any public comments of the few of you that loyally stuck around? Thank you. Yes, sir. Could you tell us your name?
Keith Brewer.
Hi, Keith, how are you?
I'm fine, thanks. I've heard all kinds of discussions tonight from parking meter violations to having a chicken coop in the borough of Lewis Town.
You picked a good night.
I have one complaint.
Okay.
I have brought it to the borough enforcement officer and the borough council since 1996, off and on throughout those years, about a property at One North Grand Street. To date, you have done nothing.
Well, that's not true. She's been fined.
Oh, well, great. And if she pays fine, great. But what do you do about the blighted property? Since 1996, you've done nothing. I've watched enforcement officers come and go. There was a tree growing up in the dormer at the backside of that building. That is since gone because the roof caved in. Windows are broken now, cats are running in and out of there. Possums are going under the front steps, part of the front porch is falling off. Pigeons are flying in and out. This just didn't happen. This has been going on since 96. What are you guys doing? Yeah, you, you issue citations and you make resolutions. Nobody enforces it. I talked to your enforcement code officer many times. There's no teeth in some of this stuff. That house is still sitting there. Probably it was a great house at one time. It is dilapidated. Front porch is falling off, and right next door to it now, at probably Three North Grand. That, it's going to turn into the same thing. For lack of better terms, you got people living in there that are coming and going. There was garbage sitting all over the front porch, back between two houses, there's garbage in there.
Is this the property right behind the old?
Tax office.
Yeah, okay.
Right behind what?
The old tax, NIFCO tax office, the building one.
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have a resolution for it?
Well, I'm curious, what is the fine?
I don't care about the fine. The fine does nothing.
Well, you got to start from somewhere. Raise the fine if you can. Is the property condemned? I mean...
Well, since 1996.
Nobody's...
Will you do something?
Well, I wasn't even worried.
Well, I know you were. You weren't here then. Mr. Seer might have been, but whatever, but he's only one person. One of the code enforcement officers, long dead. So you can't yell at him. But I've been, I brought this up since 1996.
There's somebody still living in that property.
No, nobody's been living there for the last 20-some years.
It's been empty. The property is currently condemned?
Yeah. It's been condemned for a number of years. Windows are broken out, cats are running in and out. That's 100 feet off of Market Street.
According to Rex.
Do we own the building? Who owns the...
Her name is Patricia.
Works, or Pat Works.
Who owns it?
Pat Works. Used to drive a little Corvette with a license plate Psycho.
No, that's not her.
Yes, it was her.
Yeah.
It was her. I was there whenever she bought the place.
Yeah, she was quite a client.
I asked her if she was going to put an office in there.
I thought that was Marla Conner's car.
Well, it may be a new one now, but I don't know where Pat Works is now, but in 1996, she had a red Corvette convertible with a personalized license plate Psycho on the back of it.
She was a psychologist.
Well, she was a psycho too, because of the house. And I blame, I blame the council. You guys, yeah, you got a resolution, and you had code enforcement officers. Nothing has done, been done about it.
You know, she's a scofflaw. She owns other properties in the borough that we've cited before.
What else, what's the next step then?
As I told your enforcement officer, signing her does nothing.
Well, the thing is, we have to abide by the law as well. And sometimes the law is not in our favor.
I would say do another round of psych...
We just talked through a substantial battle on Valley Street.
I realize that.
And it took
Years.
Yeah, it took so long to finally get through because unfortunately, a lot of times, it's like the court is on these people's side sometimes, and it's ridiculous.
Can you figure out how long this has been since I've complained? Since 1996? To my, to me, that figure was out to be about 14 years?
44 years.
I can't even figure it out.
24.
So, yeah, we need to find out where it is now.
She's just been cited for leave last month.
The building is so bad, I mean, it's a safety...
Oh, I know.
It is, it is. There is all kinds of animals. I mean, he's exactly right.
I don't think he's related about anything. I have no need to lie about anything.
No.
Just stop there sometime and watch.
I see it out my back door.
A bunch of pigeons flying in and out, One North Bridge.
One North Grand, and then look at the next house, Three North Grand. It won't be long till that'll be like that, too.
Yeah, it's a safety issue now.
That might be a bird thing, too.
There you go.
But I just see, you know, like that one property, if we take it, if we... But I just see, you know, like that one property, if we take it, if we condemn and take the property from them, then the borough's stuck with the expensive cost of tearing that building down.
I know.
It's a no-win situation for us.
I just, I mean, there's gotta be a solution.
For the residents.
For the borough.
Because if you, what do you think his property is gonna be worth?
I totally agree with my, when one city decides my health, I would not.
One more issue on that particular property. I think it's three years ago, you gave me a letter saying I had to fix up my sidewalks because they were cracked or broken or they didn't match, they were uneven. I did that. 60 days later, your street commission dug a hole in one of my new sidewalks for a resident of one of the apartments wanted a handicap parking spot. Didn't confide in me. I own this sidewalk, they said, that's why I had to replace it. I asked him about what if the guy moves, wanted the handicap. Why didn't you ask me that, if I should put a handicap parking spot there? Well, they made a note of that. I guess maybe you do that now, since I was a property owner. But One North Grand Street, that sidewalk is two to three inches lower than my sidewalk. It was when I fixed my sidewalk, and it still is, and that was like seven years ago. I've complained to whoever I complained to, the street commission, I came up here for a meeting. Nothing. I don't care if you pass 100 resolutions, if you don't have any teeth in them, what are you gonna do? Since 1996, I've been bitching about this building. Nothing. Either make a new resolution or whatever. You cite her, great, she pays the fine, doesn't help with the property owner or the appearance of the street.
Could we cite and then have our street crew do it and then leave property for none? But then it might go up...
Are you ready to do the sidewalk?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I know we do that for the weeds and the grass and stuff.
I mean, we could do the weeds or the grass, I mean...
I think it's a...
There's plenty of weeds and grass growing there, too.
I didn't know that I would fix something else and then leave it.
No, I mean, the sidewalk, I'm talking about the sidewalk.
Yeah, you've done that before. You give her a notice if she doesn't do it.
I didn't know about the sidewalk itself.
Yeah, I mean, you've done that before.
I'm sure it's on the law when it's rejected.
I think what you need to do is you need to get the records from code enforcement of what's been done with that property, when it started, you know. How many times has she been cited and done this? I mean, I know it's been numerous. I've complained to Rex about it myself.
So does my uncle.
And...
One of the best ordinances you passed was years ago, when John Light is here, where you made the landlord clean up his apartments and things like that. I don't know what you called it anymore. Soon as I got the letter about that, another friend of mine, we cleaned up our apartments. We had them inspected, we were told what was wrong, we fixed them. Cost me $2,000. What happened? 60 days after all that, we didn't have to do it anymore. I don't know who passed it, I don't know what, most of you guys probably weren't here, but I know who was here, and he was instrumental in rescinding that. He's now on the water authority. So, I mean, that was the best thing.
That was the round ordinance, is what that was.
Yeah, but that does nothing for our property owner.
True.
So if you don't go after the property owners, why go after the rental?
That means, we have codes that we need to have enforced.
Right.
It's, and, yeah, I can't disagree at all.
I'm just telling you, you can pass all the ordinances you want about chicken coops and everything else. That, is it just limited to chickens now, or can I raise a calf in here, or can I raise some pigs?
You can't raise anything yet. It's just being advertised. It has not been passed.
Oh, I thought that was a lot of wasted time, and I don't, I don't agree with, you know, people having to raise chickens maybe to survive during pandemics or whatever.
Okay.
But that was a lot of waste of time for the night. When you got buildings sitting around 100 feet off Market Street that have been complained about for 24 years, nothing's done with it? That's an ordinance. I can't wait till this chicken coop thing goes by. We'll see if it flies. I'd like to see who brought that up to begin with. I mean, was that from a borough resident?
I'm a borough resident.
Did you bring it up? You want to raise chickens?
Yes.
God bless you.
Thank you.
I hope your neighbors go along with them, and I hope you follow the ordinance properly. That certainly was a ridiculous recommendation.
That is your opinion, sir.
Thank you. My opinion is that unless you have some teeth in your ordinances, it doesn't mean that it'll quack.
I don't disagree with you.
Well, let's get it fixed.
Hey, look, you're overlooking a lot of things.
No, I'm not. I've been in here numerous times about this. I'm not overlooking one thing.
You're looking at one property out of several. You're looking at one specific issue out of tons that we have attacked in the past three years, sir.
You're doing a thing about them?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
I understand. It's frustrating for you.
There's a lot that needs to be fixed.
Can I finish, sir, please? I understand. It's very, very frustrating for you. It would be me too, okay? I get it, all right? I have some of, not quite that bad, but I have some properties in my neighborhood that will end up the same way if something's not done about them. This is the first time that I, in hearing you come here, I've only been here for three years. I understand you've been here several times. I assure you, I don't know what the answer will be. I can't promise you anything because I don't know how it will go. But I assure you that this is on the agenda for the next Law and Ordinance Committee meeting. I'm the chairman of Law and Ordinance, and it is now my focus.
Give me a second. I've been told it's for 26, four years.
I understand, I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll go into executive session, and we're going to discuss civil service.
Yeah, I have a question. I'm sorry, I'm just ready my turn.
And you are?
My name is Matt Wright.
Okay. Sorry, Matt.
Yeah, so, let's look at, just trying to get past all the chicken issues and such, so, I'm waiting patiently. But there's a group of us that are concerned about the, obviously, the water authority issue, and we're just kind of like waiting on an update from the borough council to see what's standing in on that and what any facts the borough would like to offer.
Well, that's our, on our discussion for executive committee.
Okay.
Okay.
And you'll come out of committee and you'll explain everything that you discussed, or how's this gonna operate here?
We...
I don't know.
It all depends. Yeah, we don't know. It depends on what everybody says, whatever, what the result is.
Okay, very well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.